Okay, we'll call the Thompson Planning District meeting to order September 4th at 7:00. We have an agenda before us, are there any changes to the agenda? Thank you, we need a motion to approve the agenda as presented. Board Member Smook and Board Member Byer, all in favor? It's carried. We have the adoption of minutes for Thompson Planning District meeting August 13, 2018. Resolution 2018-013 moved by Board Member Ellis, seconded by Board Member Collada. Be resolved that the minutes of the Thompson Planning District held in Council Chamber, City Hall, Thompson, Manitoba, on Monday, August 13, 2018, be adopted as circulated. Call for the question, all those in favor? Carry your announcements, thank you. Now, resolution to approve the Crown Lands and Property Agency general permit number 72610 for a dog kennel. We have Crown Lands and Property Agency general permit number 72610 and a memo from Director of Development Services. Resolution 2018-014 moved by Board Member Byer, seconded by Board Member Collada. Whereas the Thompson Planning District has been advised of a Crown Lands general permit number 72610 for 0.50 acres, 100 by 200 feet of land locating on Lot 3, PT Southwest 1/4, 4 and PT Southeast 1/4, 5-78-3 WPM in the LGD of Mystery Lake for a dog kennel site. And whereas the Development Review Committee has reviewed the application and have no concerns now for, be it resolved that the Thompson Planning District Board advise the Crown Lands and the Property Agency that the approval of the application shall be subject to the applicant obtaining the required permits for the Planning District and confirmation with building and fence requirements as specified in LGD of Mystery Lake by law number 541. I'll go to Anthony for support.
The land is located south of the city, the city of Thompson's boundaries. It's along the Fire College Road and the intent of the proponent is to install fencing, a gate, and a temporary storage shed in support of the existing dog kennel. The land parcel is currently designated LD, which is Limited Development Zone in the LGD of Mystery Lake zoning by law. As kennels are permitted under the LD's zone, so no rezoning will be required. As mentioned, it was reviewed at Development Review on August 16 and there are no concerns.
Okay, we're going to go to the mover, Board Member Byer.
Yes, I'll support this. This is actually, for many years, been the, if you will, a historical use of that area is for people to keep their dogs there and having them properly fenced is protection from other predatory animals and I'm glad to see this move forward.
Thank you, any other questions or comments? Seeing none, call for the question, all those in favor? Carry your announcements, thank you. Just before we adjourn, I want to note regrets from Board Members Dave Haseman, Brent Mack, Board Member Kathy Valentino, Duncan Wong, and Dennis Foley. I look for a motion for adjournment. Board Member Ellis, Board Member Smook, all in favor? It's carried. We stand adjourned. We're now moving into the regular council meeting of council, called to order at 7:05. If you haven't already, please change your nameplates. As mentioned, we have regrets from Councillor Valentino and Councillor Wong and Councillor Foley. We have the, just as we call this meeting to order and before we get to the approval of the agenda, I would first like to acknowledge Rom from CBC, sitting in his first meeting from First City Council. Welcome to Thompson, look forward to your reporting. And secondly, I want to acknowledge Anthony McGinnis, his first day as City Manager in the big chair. Pressure's on. We'll now move to the approval of the agenda, are there any changes to the general? Yes?
Deletion of item 7.4.
Okay, if council could remove 7.4 resolution from the agenda. I need a motion to approve the amended agenda, Councillor Byer, Councillor Ellis, all in favor? It's carried. Motion to move the adoption of the amended agenda as presented. Councillor Byer, Councillor Ellis, all in favor? It's carried. We're now going into general inquiries, if anyone has a question, please come forward, state your name and ask your question at the delegation table. Welcome.
Mr. Mayor, to talk.
Yep.
Before I begin, I'd like to thank Mr. Mayor, allow me to come here and ask questions and make some comments, give me a little bit of training, so I appreciate it and thank you. And what I'd like to ask today is regarding to resolution 2018-193. 2018-193. 193. Regarding to the Thompson Regional Community Centre, TRCC, have two 100 gallon hot water tanks which have been failed, they mean being shut off. So I'd like to know, when these two water tanks shut off, how do you get hot water?
Recreation Director Carol Taylor.
We have a couple other hot water tanks that have been able to keep up to this point, but once hockey starts, they won't be able to keep up.
Okay, thank you. And first, we have $10,000. Now, the costs go up to $15,000. What I understand here, the $15,000 is purchase and installation of the one 100 gallon tank. They mean the costs go up so high? Can you explain, please?
Carol.
The original tender came back at just under $40,000 for two. We've been able to break it down and get it down to $15,000 for one.
I've got a review information for you. Because I have taken out two 100 gallons water tanks for T3, okay? It's in the warehouse right now. So maybe you can request to buy it, or maybe they can even donate to the TRCC. That's up to the city to go ahead for this. And...
Okay, just wanted to address the cost, part of the cost. And correct me if I'm wrong, is that when these two water tanks were installed initially, certain things regarding the piping, the foundation were up to code, but the code has changed, so part of that cost includes making those changes.
Okay, thank you. I have living comments down here regarding to, today we are living in the very, I would say, modernization. Most of the people forget about hot water tanks, they're using inline-on-demand, which you can save a lot of energy because when you need the hot water and the power come on and then you get hot water instantly. So I don't understand why you're not looking at another alternative, instead of going for this 100 gallon water tank. Because I work on 100 gallon water tanks, they're so bulky, I need about three to four people to help me to move it to the location and it's part of the safety too. And do you think the city should look at this? Maybe it's the cost saving?
Before me, but I think basically we're replacing in kind, but certainly your suggestion in regards to inline-on-demand could be researched further on other projects.
Because a lot of airports are using it, just for your information. Okay, thank you very much.
Any other questions or comments? Second time? Please come forward, state your name and ask your question.
Carol. I have been informed that we had a wonderful Winter Games this winter. Unfortunately, I wasn't able to be there, but I've had reports that it was wonderful and congratulations to everyone involved. In that note, has there been a report given as to the final tally of the expenses and the income from that event? And when will we get that report?
It's being compiled at this point and we should see it in September. Chairpersons Kissick and Ross Hitch said that they would come back to see us in September with a report and sit at the delegation table and walk through the report and the success of the games. So thanks for asking.
Any other questions? Second time, third and final. Okay, we're going to move on to committee reports, or sorry, adoption of minutes. October or August 13, 2018, regular meeting of council, resolution 2018-188, moved by Councillor Ellis, seconded by Deputy Mayor Colleen Smook. Be resolved that the minutes of the regular meeting of council held in Council Chamber, City Hall, Thompson, Manitoba on Monday, August 13, 2018, be adopted as circulated. Call for the question, all those in favor? Carry your announcements, thank you. Now we're going to committee reports and we have the Communications Committee report and it's attached and who's making the report? Councillor Ellis.
So I have the Communications Committee report for March 21 till September 4, 2018. Our committee members, Councillor Blake Ellis, myself as chair, Mayor Dennis Fenske, Councillor Dennis Foley, City Manager Gary Sepatelli, Casper, our Communications Officer, Executive Assistant to Mayor and Councillor Angela English. And organizational reps are Twyla Story from the Northern Regional Health Authority and Tara Ritchie from Valley Manitoba Operations. So our progress. The trade show in health and leisure mart booths have been expanded on and now have a more strategic role in the city's annual communication efforts. The 2018 trade show booth highlighted Thompson's role as a regional hub as well as the city's efforts to stimulate economic growth to that end. Engaging attendees was more proactive than previous years. Recreational signage is currently being installed throughout the city and the main signage continues to be reviewed. The second phase of signage improvements will include the waste disposal grounds, the water treatment plant, and the Kali cross-country ski trails. Improvements for website content have been put forward by Development Services and Recreation Parks and Culture and will be implemented this fall. While the committee has not met throughout the summer, the Communications Department has taken an active role in the development of a business profile targeted towards new and existing entrepreneurs, addressing both Thompson's economic strength and misconceptions about Thompson's current economic climate. The development of a broader communication profile will follow. And Charlene Kissick stepped away from the committee at the beginning of the summer, so we'd just like to thank Charlene for her time on the committee. And that's our report.
Caroline, did you add? Okay, questions on the report? Any questions? Seeing none, we'll receive for information, thank you. We're now moving into correspondence, we have a letter from Jeff Wharton, Minister of Municipal Relations, in regards to the 2018 Municipal Road and Bridge Program. We have the letter and the 2018 Municipal Road and Bridge Program contribution. Attention Mayor, Mayors and Reeves, I am pleased to advise that your municipality has been approved to receive funding under the Municipal Road Improvement Program, component of the 2018 Municipal Road and Bridge Program. Department officials work closely with the Association of Manitoba Municipalities to establish the transitional 2018 Municipal Road and Bridge Program and to select successful strategic road rehabilitation projects. The successful project recipients and the corresponding provincial contribution are outlined in the attachment to this letter. Our government is pleased to support local municipal infrastructure projects such as your municipality's road project. Improvements in our transportation infrastructure ensure that our province will see increased economic activity and public safety across Manitoba. The amount provided to your community for the approved road project will depend upon the actual costs incurred up to the maximum approved provincial contribution level. The deadline for completing projects and submitting all funding claims for 2018 Municipal Road and Bridge Program projects is March 1, 2019. Look forward to expanding our partnership to address the full scope of infrastructure needs in your community. We recently announced Canada Manitoba Investing in Canada Infrastructure Program, bilateral agreement that will provide more than $1.17 billion in federal funding over the next decade for infrastructure projects throughout Manitoba. Sincerely, Honorable Jeff Wharton, Minister of Municipal Relations. And the city of Thompson's allocation for street paving was $200,000. Go to Administration for support, anything to add?
The city of Thompson was eligible for up to $400,000. We were led to believe that we'd be receiving $400,000 and obviously it was reduced to $200,000 for the year.
Thank you, council, any questions or comments? If council will indulge, I would like to make a comment in regards to the announcement and following up on Mr. McGinnis's comments. We were advised by staff earlier on in the spring, in the midst of our budgetary process, that we would be allocated the 2017 amounts, which was $400,000. We were subsequently, and we proceeded as council and staff budgeting for that dollar figure and budgeting for that level of scope of work. We received in August notification that our funding would be $200,000, half of which was verbally approved to us. In that manner, the budget for 2018 had been set on the premise of $400,000. So without going back into reserves or asking for an increase in taxation, we as council decided to reduce the scope of work in 2018. And moving forward, we will have to again press upon, there is an emergency resolution from the city of Thompson and the city of Selkirk at AMM, Association of Manitoba Municipalities, for their fall meeting, to again lobby the province on two fronts. One, to not put the Municipal Road and Bridge Program into the basket funding formula, to keep that separate. And secondly, to make the announcements at a timely fashion. The construction season in Manitoba is very short. Basically, in northern Manitoba, you have about five months to get your job awarded, mobilized, and construction completed and demobilized. So to get an announcement in August of a five-month cycle that our funding is cut in half is unacceptable and we will support, as the city of Selkirk will support, that resolution moving forward in the fall to lobby the province to reestablish the level of funding and also to keep it separate from the basket funding that's been proposed. With that, we'll move on to the next correspondence, a letter from Cliff Cullen, Minister of Justice and Attorney General, in response to our congratulatory letter. Mr. Cullen's letter reads, Dear Mayor Fenske, thanks for your letter of August 2, congratulating me on my new role as Manitoba's Minister of Justice and Attorney General. I greatly enjoyed working with you during my time as Minister of Crown Services. I have always appreciated your strong advocacy for the city of Thompson and I'm confident that we will continue to have a productive working relationship as I assume the responsibilities of Minister of Justice and Attorney General. Thank you again for your letter and words of encouragement. I look forward to working with you to make Thompson its surrounding communities safer for Manitobans. Sincerely, Honorable Cliff Cullen, Minister of Justice and Attorney General. I can advise council that we have secured a meeting with the Deputy Minister of Justice on Friday while I'm in Winnipeg attending the Policing Contract Committee meeting where we will discuss the Main Street North Program, the 911 call center in regards to drop calls or being put on hold. And secondly, we will ask him to discuss with his counterparts in housing the condition of 128 hemlock, which was recently determined to be a crime scene in a fatality in our community. Any comments from council? Seeing none, we'll go on to a public hearing for Manitoba Elected Divisions, Boundaries, Commission, September 11, 2018. We have a poster for that public hearing, basically stating that Tuesday, September 11, 2018, from 5 to 7 PM at the Best Western Thompson Hotel and Suites on Mystery Lake Road across from City Hall here, they will hold this, Manitoba Electoral Divisions, Boundaries Commission will hold this public hearing to ensure that people are well aware of the reconstruction of boundaries or potential. Any questions or comments from admin? Council, any questions? Seeing none, we'll receive for information. Next, we have the Canadian Federation of Independent Business, the CFIB news release, municipal overspending needs attention in fall elections. We have the news release from CFIB and we have the news release from the city of Thompson. Basically, we have discussed this in a couple instances since the announcement. We did do a press release in that regard and I would ask council if they have any comments before I make my comments. Any councils have any comments? Administration, any comments on the CFIB? Seeing none, just my comments, as mentioned previously, we did review this annual report. We did, with staff's assistance, produce a press release countering some of the points that have been made by the CFIB. Should be pointed out that the CFIB looks back from 2018 to present and they look on the expenditure side only, they don't consider the revenues in regards to the increase in labor costs. Specifically on that comment by the CFIB, at the higher-than-normal labor costs increased by the city of Thompson, as we explained in the press release, the vast majority of the increases on labor were due to the hiring of additional staff. If residents will remember, since 2008, we have taken on the waste disposal grounds, the Community Safety Officer Program was expanded from four to eight officers, the Thompson Regional Community Centre was opened, and we've also taken on the water treatment plant. So our staffing numbers have increased, but there is also, in some cases, corresponding revenue to offset some of the cost increase. That wasn't reflected in the report. And also in regards to annual increases, just a reminder to the general public that on the capital side of projects, that this council has not dipped into residential or commercial taxes, property taxes, to pay for capital projects. They've been funded through reserves and grants from other agencies. So in that effect, the tax bill issued by the city of Thompson has not been affected by capital projects. The operating budget that has been passed by this council since 2015, on the residential side, 1.5, on the commercial side, 1.5, the rate of inflation at that time was 1.12. In 2016, 1.5 on the residential side, 1.5 on the commercial side, the rate of inflation at that time was 1.42. 2017, 2.00 on residential, 2.00 on commercial, the rate of inflation at that point was 1.61%. And in 2018, we passed 1.9% at residential level and 1.9 at commercial level and the rate of inflation was 2.15%. So I would like to congratulate this council and administration for being prudent in covering the costs that are uncontrolled by other agencies. For instance, in the public safety sector, we are responsible for the RCMP contract, the largest contract in Manitoba for our city of 38 officers. We are not part of the negotiations, but we pay the quarterly bill as produced in their costs, we have no control on those costs. Other costs that the average homeowner would see, whether it's hydro, MTS, or utilities, we have to also look at those increases and that's included in the tax increase that was seen over the last four years. So again, we welcome the report to the CFIB, we question the quality and the depth of the positions that they've taken, especially with the last comment in the report stating that they recommend that the problems in Manitoba freeze all municipal spending until municipalities can get their spending under control. I will say publicly that our spending is well under control and that we are working hard to make sure that this community is sustainable for many years to come and that we look to seek other revenue sources rather than going to the taxpayer and we will continue to do so moving forward. Thank you, with that, we'll receive that for information. Now we're moving into resolutions. And the first resolution, sorry, is resolution to approve Comstream Giggle Links Inc. Right Away Easement Agreement. We have a memo from Director of Development Services managing assets and infrastructure and two maps. The resolution reads, resolution 2018-189, moved by Councillor Byer, seconded by Councillor Ellis. Whereas on August 13, 2018, council passed resolution number 2018-176 approving the Comstream Giggle Links Inc. Comstream Right Away Easement Agreement. And whereas it has been identified that the plan number and the land legally described in resolution number 2018-176 was an error, and now for, be it resolved, the council approved the Comstream Giggle Links Inc. Right Away Easement Agreement file number 019 for the following area, Park Plan 755 PLTO and Division. With that, I will go to administration for support, anything to add?
Only to add that this is housekeeping, the incorrect legal land description was used and this is just to rectify that situation.
Go to the mover, Councillor Byer.
Nothing to add to the comments.
Seeing none, call for the question, all those in favor? Carry your announcements, thank you. We now have a resolution to approve sole sourcing the council orientation to Way to Go Consulting, Inc. and we have a memo from the executive assistants. Resolution 2018-190, moved by Deputy Mayor Colleen Smook, seconded by Councillor Byer. Whereas the city of Thompson has a council orientation and training policy to provide an orientation for all members of council after a general municipal election. And whereas in 2014, the city of Thompson retained Way to Go Consulting, Inc. to provide the council orientation, now therefore be it resolved, the council approved sole sourcing the 2018 council orientation and training to Way to Go Consulting, Inc. at a cost of $3,333.50, tax included. We'll go to administration for support, anything to add?
It would be the second time the council would be hiring someone to do the orientation.
Thank you, go to the mover, Deputy Mayor Colleen Smook.
Yes, when we did this, after we were elected, it was very helpful for us to learn the ropes and at that time, there was like 80% of us were new council members, so it was really a good thing to have for us.
Thank you, council, any questions? Councillor Byer?
Yeah, I really like the idea of hiring. An outside source. In my first term, the orientation was done by administration, second term by the consultant. And I think, in all fairness, I think more attention is paid when you have the outside consultant come in because then it's seen as truly an independent body, so I'd like that idea. But the consultants have a variety experiences with a variety of municipalities and their issues and they can bring lots of examples to the fore when they're trying to explain certain things in the orientation.
Any other questions? Seeing none, call for the question, all in favor? Carry your announcements, thank you. We now have a resolution to approve the change in regular meetings of council schedule. Resolution 2018-191, moved by Councillor Collada, seconded by Councillor Byer. Whereas per the Organizational Procedure by law 1931-2015, as amended, council may, by resolution, vary or cancel the date and time of regular meeting. And whereas council wishes to remove the regular meeting of council schedule for Monday, October 29, 2018, as the newly-elected council is not sworn in until the inaugural meeting of council scheduled for Wednesday, November 7, 2018, now therefore be it resolved that council approve moving the October 29, 2018, regular meeting of council from the council schedule. Administration, any support? Go to the mover, Councillor Collada, anything to add?
Well, we already have two meetings in October, so I don't think this will have a big impact, but it certainly wouldn't be practical to have a meeting of council without the council being sworn in yet. So I think this is very necessary and I certainly approve it.
Thank you, council, any other questions? Seeing none, call for the question, all in favor? It's carried unanimously, thank you. We now have a resolution to approve allocating money from the Thompson Regional Recreation Centre trust account to the purchase of the water heater for the Thompson Regional Community Centre and we have a memo from the Director of Recreation, Parks and Culture. Resolution 2018-193, moved by Deputy Mayor Colleen Smook, seconded by Councillor Byer. Whereas the Thompson Regional Community Centre, TRCC, has two 100 gallon hot water tanks which have failed and whereas administration is requesting council allocate $15,000 from the TRCC trust account for the purchase of the installation of one 100 gallon hot water tank, and now therefore be resolved, the council allocate $15,000 from the TRCC trust account for the purchase and installation of one 100 gallon hot water tank. We'll go to the administration for support, anything to add, Carol?
No.
Thank you. The mover, Deputy Mayor Colleen Smook, anything to add?
It's important that we get this up and running before the season. I would like us to take into, combine some of the comments we had at the opening tonight when we're looking at it.
Thank you, council, any other questions? Seeing none, call for the question, all those in favor? Carry your announcements, thank you. We're now going into the mayor's report and this covers August 14 to September 4. Attended and brought greetings for the Northern Association Community Councils at the 48th Annual General Assembly and Information Expo in Winnipeg on August 15. Received a thank you letter from Mayor Reg Mead from Obothen on behalf of the council. Along with council members and administration, met with Elster Ross, Director of Mining Operations from Valet on August 21. Attended the Thompson 2020 planning session on August 28. The pre-election orientation for potential candidates was held on August 30 and I understand we had about 20 people attend, both for the trustee and the council. And then the weekly transit ad hoc committee meeting started on August 20. Also attended the annual Labor Day festivities hosted by President Warren Lukey of local USW 6911. Want to congratulate him and his volunteers and his executive for a great day for recognizing Labor Day. Various committee, or Deputy Mayor Smook also attended the meeting, or the festivities as well. Various committee meetings were held, Development Review, Special In Camera Recreation and Community Services, and Legislative and Intergovernmental Affairs Committee. That's my activities for that timeframe. I'll now go to council to report on any city activities that they represented the city between August 14 and September 4. Anybody? Deputy Mayor Smook.
August 18, I attended at the Belkamansky Wellness Center, KTC and UCN. They had part of the, as part of the reconciliation, they were returning artwork back to some of the students from the schools prior, so they had a full two days there. It was very interesting, I got to go off and on and some of the people from the outline communities spoke. It's very touching, if anybody ever has a chance to go listen to some of these stories about the schools, please do residential schools.
Ellis? Just before we close, I forgot to mention and want to congratulate... Ellis, just before we close, I forgot to mention, I want to congratulate, oh, sorry, go ahead.
The rail, last week, we had the rail announcement that there will be a train going to Churchill. They've actually started the mobilization work on it, so it is basically a good news story that they're hoping before winter sets in, as long as we're up to, the work keeps going and we get to Churchill this winter, I'll be more than happy.
And with that, I'd like to thank Deputy Mayor Smoak on her involvement in regards to One North and representing the city of Thompson. The point I wanted to add is that there was a recent election in NCN, Nelson House. Want to congratulate Marcel Moody at being re-elected as chief of the Nelson House community. Also adding two new councillors, I want to welcome them to, to the band council and also to thank those band councillors that weren't successful for their service in the last term of office. It's always great to continue to work with and continue working with Nelson House, our neighbors and business partners in our community, so we look forward to resuming those relations with Chief Moody and his new council, which will be sworn in on Thursday and Deputy Mayor Smoak will be attending that in Nelson House. With that, I'd look for a motion to adjourn. Councillor Byer, Deputy Mayor Smoak, all in favor? Thank you. We stand adjourned.